Okay, ready? Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Hello out there, hello everybody. Welcome to our meeting this evening. We're calling it to order and we're gonna have a roll call by our city clerk Cathy Valdez.
The record shall reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember John Aguilera.
If you all rise, we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance which is going to be led by our city attorney Daryl Piper.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can remain standing if, and Cynthia Goedger, did I pronounce that right? Is Cynthia here? Yes, come on up. She's the Regent for the Ranch of Buena Vista chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution and she's going to do our invocation for us tonight.
Please join with me as I pray. God of all creations bless our decisions as this council gathers to make laws affecting the people of Vista. May we use only our best judgment and skills, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us today. And may we always act in accordance with what is best for our community, our fellow citizens. Thank you for helping us establish our work and goals this day. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to announce in accordance with the Brown Act that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing is the approval of our agenda by our city manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay. We didn't have a closed session today, there was nothing scheduled for that. And the next thing on our agenda is our presentations, and we have two. The first one tonight is our 2016 Strawberry Festival post-event report. Please welcome Brett Schatzenbaugh, and he's the Chief Executive Officer of the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and he's gonna present the report.
Thank you Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight to share with you about the Strawberry Festival. To start with, let's see, you forgot, okay. There we go. Okay, so I wanna share some results with you from our event this year that happened, of course, in the end of May, Memorial Day weekend. First of all, we estimate we had over 100,000 people come down to our event this year. Huge crowds, I know I saw many of you there that day. We had 394 street fair vendors, which was up over 10% from just the year before and is the most we've ever had. 2,600 runners in the strawberry run, and I'll talk about them more in just a second. The runners came from 13 different states, seven different counties, and 23 different cities and communities within our own county, so a broad cross-section of people participating. And speaking about the runners in particular, 2,600 is the most we've ever had. Our previous high was 2,250, so that's a pretty good growth to get to that number. 36% from our own community in Vista, another 37% from other communities along the 78 corridor, which is nice because those are the people most likely to come back to our community to maybe go to a restaurant, or a retail shop, or a brewery, or whatnot. And there we go, another 14% from other parts of San Diego County, 6.5% from other parts of Southern California, and 1.85% from out of state. And our out-of-state numbers did grow this year, which is great, those are tourism dollars. You know, it is a holiday weekend, as you know, so bringing in tourists to our community is an important part of what we try to do, and so we were happy to see that number inch up a little bit. We're very active in getting this event out into the public. We distribute our press release all over the place, 64 online PR websites that we distributed to, that you can see some there. We send, of course, information to all the TV stations and a whole lot of radio stations as well. And we're very active on social media. You can see there, just in April alone, 2,200 likes on our Strawberry Festival Facebook page with over 2 million people, over 2 million impressions, and then in May it goes up to over 3 million impressions. And in June, which is kind of the post-event portion, but you get kind of a wrap-up, people looking at pictures, things like that, over 3.6 million impressions just on our Strawberry Facebook page. Or not just ours, but on Facebook in general, I'm sorry. We're active in other forms of social media as well, 1,500 tweets. I love the Instagram portion, the hashtag Vista Strawberry Fest and the hashtag Vista Strawberry Festival, 914 uses of the Vista Strawberry Festival one. It's really fun if you go out and do a search on that hashtag. Instagram continues to evolve, as I'm sure a lot of you know, and it's really fun because so many people post videos now straight to Instagram, and so there were a lot of videos posted from our event, people having a great time. And then, I don't know how to use Pinterest, but we did 282 pins, so somebody on my team does. Our website, of course, gets a ton of traffic as well, 32,000 page views just in the month of May. That's on the strawberry run site, on the Chambers site, over 8,500 page views, but the big one, of course, is the Strawberry Festival, 85,000 page views, and that's just the last two weeks of May. So, very active. Online, we're so many places, but what I love is just, you know, people getting more and more exposure to who we are in Vista. So we were mentioned over 5 million times online with over 101 million impressions, so it's a lot of people hearing about the Strawberry Fest, which is great. This is just a little bit of, a few snapshots of different places online where you can see where we were present. Of course, we use print media as well, a whole bunch of different publications from the Union Tribune, Seaside Courier, North County Sun Entertainment, Coast News, the Cities Magazine called Our Vista Magazine, as well as the Chambers Magazine, and the school district is called School News. So we do put a lot of print media out there. We're also active, a lot of relationships with different radio stations, including Univision and these ones listed here. But I really like the TV coverage. We had three sessions in studio leading up to the Strawberry Festival. Two were simultaneously on May 26th, and then one was on San Diego Living on May 27th. And there's a little, there's some pictures here. But one of the things I like about going into studio, I was at KUSI on May 26th, and this is about three days before the Strawberry Festival, and I was waiting off-camera with Barry, our mascot, and one of our business vendors who you can see in the picture in the lower right-hand corner. We were waiting to go on for our segment. And while the newscasters were on air, and they were kind of talking about what's coming up next, they were talking about, oh, we're gonna have somebody from the Vista Strawberry Festival, and they were still talking about Vista and our beautiful sign on Paseo Santa Fe and the controversy. And it irritated me as a, you know, Vistin with a lot of passion about our community that that was the topic, that all they could think of to talk about in teasing a story about Vista was our sign, so. But on the flip side, I was very happy that we were coming to give them something else to talk about, you know, something else really positive, and hopefully the next time they're talking about Vista, they're not talking about the sign anymore, and they're talking about the Strawberry Festival instead. We're active in other ways, as you know, banners, posters, t-shirts, we're all over the place. And we, this event, to put it on, takes a lot. It costs us a lot to put this event on, over $145,000 that we spend to make the event happen. 57% of that was spent right in Vista and another 30% in North County, so we try to practice what we preach and spend local to help our local businesses in any way possible in putting the event on. And then, talking about the future, we want to continue this as a one-day event. I'm sure some of you got some feedback from recent events that closed streets on Fridays and Saturdays, and maybe some businesses don't like that so much, at least I got that feedback, so I'll speak for myself. We want to keep it centralized in downtown Vista, but to grow to the way we want to grow, we're gonna have to really take the Paseo Santa Fe corridor. We've talked to staff about this, and next year our hope is to take the chunk right in front of Sonic and use that as part of the event. Eventually, we want to grow it all the way down to Pepper Tree and use that whole beautiful new Paseo Santa Fe corridor, move some of our entertainment portions down there, have vendors down there. We want to grow to 500-plus vendors. It's great that we hit just a shade under 400, but I always remind my staff and my board that, you know, the Avocado Festival has 450 vendors, the Escondido Street Fair has 450 vendors, and of course Carlsbad, the big one, has over 900 vendors. So we're still growing to where we want to be, we haven't arrived at all yet, and there's more room to grow. We want to grow to 3,000 runners, you know, going from 2,250 to 2,600 was a big jump in one year. I don't know if we can get all the way to 3,000 in one year, but that's our next goal that we're gonna try to hit with the run. The run is, continues to be a very positive thing. We want to keep the course the same, we only have made minor modifications the last couple of years, but it's been received very well. And we want to add some new contests, we already have two or three ideas to continue to expand the contest, which add to that flavor of it, of the family fun aspect of it, and to being a great festival, not just a street fair. You know, the festival aspect adds a lot to why people show up to our event. But we also want to create kind of a strawberry month in Vista, so one of the ideas we have, some of the businesses already started this, but they've created photo cutouts, the kind where, you know, there are all kinds of crazy pictures and people put their face through it and take a picture of themselves. We want to get a lot of the businesses, as many as we can, who are interested, restaurants, retail establishments, breweries, whatever, to have these kind of displays in there, and we're gonna run contests of people who will take a picture of themselves and post it on social media, and then we'll give out prizes in various ways. So we really want to include the businesses in the whole month leading up to the Strawberry Fest to build anticipation and participation, et cetera. And then we have our five-year BHAG. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with the term BHAG, our big hairy audacious goal. So here it is. In five years, we want to have over 1,000 vendors and over 250,000 attendees come to the Strawberry Festival. Don't snicker, Patrick, I'm serious. We already exceeded our previous BHAG very rapidly, so we really think we can make this the biggest street fair festival-type event in the county, and that's our goal. So, obviously, we need your cooperation, want to continue to do that. So with that, I thank you for your partnership in the event and your support, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them now and...
Any questions?
Or comments, feedback of any sort.
I'll make a comment. I just want to say, I was there for the entire day, including helping kick off the runners for each different age group. And again, it was a stellar event, so I just wanted to say thank you for what you do and for bringing this to Vista, and thank you for what you do for us, it was really great, and I look forward to next year.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Congratulations on all of your increases that you've done, and I'm with you, I think you can make this the best event in North County, so got my support.
I appreciate that.
Although I'll be walking, not running.
That's okay, all are welcome.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you guys.
Okay, thanks. With that, I'm going to do our next presentation, we have one more, is a presentation of vehicle theft recognition certificates to deputies Tyler Eichman and Tyler Skeels. And so I'm gonna invite the representative from the California Highway Patrol, Jordan Racy from AAA, and Captain Sinemo to the podium to present the awards, and I would like to take the council down with us also. We have our CHP captain, Amy, is it Megan?
Yes.
Yes, and so I'd like to turn this over to her.
Thank you Mayor, thank you City Council. So, on behalf of the California Highway Patrol, we greatly appreciate the opportunity to recognize those in our community and our law enforcement community that make a difference. And so I just want to point out to you the difference that they make. We all know that vehicle theft is a crime of opportunity and one in which we all have to remain vigilant. And so we're here to honor two deputies from the San Diego Sheriff's Department Vista Station because they are especially vigilant. And so Tyler Eichman, Eichman, excuse me, and Tyler Skeels, both very, very vigilant in that auto theft recovery. Every three minutes, there is a vehicle that is stolen, to the tune of in 2015, 180,000 vehicles to the tune of over a billion dollars. So let me tell you the impact that these two deputies have made in this community. Deputy Skeels, this is his first, what we call 10-8-5-1, 10-8-5-1 is the vehicle code section that identifies vehicle theft, and so this is his first, and so he has recovered $32,500,000 worth of vehicles, and that's from April 2015 to May of 2016.
We're gonna do photos too.
Up here, we'll walk up here.
And so Deputy Tyler Eichman, if you could come forward, and I will let you know that Deputy Eichman, this is his fourth 10-8-5-1 pin, and so the period covers April 30th, 2015 to July 1st, 2016, and he has recovered $77,500,000 in vehicles.
Actually Deputy Eichman, he's amazing that this is his fourth time he's done, fourth year that he's done this, so he's a pretty amazing guy. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda, moving on, is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar, and any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to our Clerk's Secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. And I have one item removed, item number eight, which is the City Council Policy Updates by Mary Jo Poole, and she'll be, I need one speaker, would you like to hear, I guess I would entertain the balance of the consent calendar, or if there's anything else you want pulled?
Yes ma'am, I would like to pull C5, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the remaining balance of the consent calendar.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion as second for the balance of the consent calendar. Please cast your votes on that. Okay, that motion passes unanimously with John Aguilera, or Councilmember Aguilera absent. So, do you want to hear the speaker first? Oh, I guess we'll take item C5 first, and so that will be the Friends of the Vista Library mural donation, and would you like a report on that?
Actually, no ma'am, I don't really need a report on this one, this is about the Friends of the Vista Library mural donation, and I think that's a great thing, I appreciate it very much. My only objection or concern is actually with the agreement, and I have spoken with the city attorney and the city manager both about this, and I heard their response to my concern, and that is basically, we have three paragraphs in this agreement that we're being asked to approve tonight, excuse me, that are simply reserved. And I don't think that in this day and age of technology that an agreement should have reserved in there. If we don't have any use for that paragraph, the paragraph should not be there. And I understand that it's standard in contract law, I understand that there's no way anybody can come back and put anything in those paragraphs, I just have a problem approving an agreement that has empty paragraphs in it. So, I would just ask that we request, I would make a motion that we ask that this contract come back to us rewritten with the paragraphs reordered, and have this contract be specific to the, to the item at hand, and not have empty blank paragraphs in it.
Okay, Councilmember Campbell?
Question for the city attorney. Is this type of contract abnormal for this sort of agreement, to have it written the way it is?
The contract is an adaptation of the city's standard contract with private landowners. It had to be adapted because in this case, the city owns the property.
So there's no legal ramifications of approval tonight in any way, shape, or form?
None whatsoever.
Okay.
I...
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Push my button a second time. And as I said, I met with the city attorney, and I asked the same question, and he answered the same answer. And I appreciate that very much, but just because it's standard for some people doesn't mean in Vista that we approve contracts that have blank paragraphs. And again, in today's technology, in the day and age, I don't understand why we can't have our agreement specifically written for this particular relationship. And then the next agreement, written particularly for that relationship, and I understand templates, I use templates, but you modify them for the task at hand, and I just think as a city government, as a public agency, we should not be approving agreements that have blank paragraphs. So, but thank you.
I guess my only thing when I look at reserved, I always think that in the future, if there was something that needed to be inserted, you'd have to renumber everything, and so I think that they put reserved in there so that it reserves a number, so that like five says reserved, so at some point, if there was some addition in the future, you know, maybe a year, two years, three years, that they could insert that without having to renumber the whole, and redo the whole contract. So that would be, I think, I'm gonna trust the attorney. Councilmember Franklin, I see your button.
Just to reiterate, the word reserved does not have any legal meaning, that any future term of the agreement could be inserted, edited, or changed, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
It will come back to, it'll come back to our council if there's anything that we change in the agreement.
Correct.
Okay, so I, I don't see a second on that, so then I would look for another motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the item at staff's recommendation, as written.
Do you want a second, or? Okay, I have a motion as second on that. So, please cast your votes. That motion passes with one no vote and Councilmember Aguilera absent. Okay, then that brings us to item number C8, which is our City Council Policy Updates. And I don't know if you, do you all want to report on that before I call the speaker? No? Okay. Okay, Mary Jo Poole?
Hello? Yes, thank you very much. I'm speaking to the ordinance number 2016, the Crime-Free Multi-Family Housing Program.
Oh, that's, that's not this item, that was, that's item D?
D2.
D2. So do you want to wait until that item's pulled up?
It says on the agenda, I'm sorry, I'm confused, because it says on the agenda, adopt City Council Resolution Number 2016 under C8, that's not correct.
That's for another item.
Oh.
If you're wanting to talk under Crime-Free Multi-Housing, that's under discussion item number two.
So shall I submit another card?
Well, we'll put your card in for D2.
Thank you very much.
So change that to D2.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sorry.
With that, I would make a motion to approve item C8.
Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Aguilera, excused. So, the next thing on our agenda are discussion items, and items scheduled for discussion generally require detailed explanation by the staff or the agency member that has requested them. So tonight we have three discussion items, and the first one is, D1 is our Central Vista Business Improvement District update, and Kevin Hamm, Director of Economic Development, will introduce our item.
Good evening Mayor and members of the council. Again, I'm Kevin Hamm, I'm Director of Economic Development for the city. The City Council has requested regular updates by the Vista Village Business Association on the Central Vista Business Improvement District agreement that we have with them. Typically, they give them every quarter. Today, we have Jeffrey Frankel, who's the Executive Director of the Vista Village Business Association, that will be giving the presentation this evening.
Thank you Kevin, thank you Mayor, council. I come with the regrets that Don Hine, our president, is ailing today, and he is not here. Part of it is to let him heal, but part of it is to make sure those germs don't get passed along, so please excuse his absence. Moving forward, fourth quarter highlights. Over the fourth quarter, we did our election. We moved from 11-person board, our bylaws suggest nine to 15. We did up our number of elected directors to 12, with a couple more that may be appointed in the very near future. There is a desire from the CVVID to make sure that the board members, people owning businesses, create a large percentage of that, and we're still happy to say we have 80%, over 80% bid members on our board. Our Taste of Vista back in June was the highest attendance and revenue to date. The picture you see is the Main Street American Flag Exhibit, and it will be displayed on six patriotic holidays in partnership with Young Marines, a beautiful gift that we were able to utilize neighborhood reinvestment funds, county funds, to put into practice. The next day they will be displayed is Labor Day, that Monday. As mentioned by Brett earlier, when he spoke about all the different social media aspects, we too at VVBA have a great presence in social media. In the five, six months that I've been here, we've seen increases of approximately 80 to 100 persons to our Facebook page, we've established an Instagram page, and other social media presence. We held our annual Board of Directors Retreat. We enlarged our retreat from a half-day retreat to a full-day retreat, and I'm happy to say the predominance of board members, more than 85%, attended at least one of the four sessions that we held that day. We have a work plan that was approved for the 15-16 year, fourth quarter. Moving on, Taste of Vista, as I mentioned, it was our largest yet, we had approximately 1,000 attendees, sampling from 18 restaurants, 11 breweries, and it was the largest revenue model that we've seen to date. We established a new program called the Golden Fork Award, and it was voted on by the attendees of Taste of Vista, and the inaugural Golden Fork Award went to When Pigs Fly. Future, we're gonna look to put recognizable awards in these establishments, small window stickers, five-by-seven on their doors, so both, they get the recognition as being an award winner, and VVBA gets the additional recognition as well. Additionally, we're looking at, because it is both a restaurant and brewery event, to do some type of Golden Stein Award for our local breweries in the years to come. Financial recap, as you see, over the course of the fiscal year, we had a net gain of $7,000, bid fees, if you look at the note, there was some lag in the third-quarter bid fees and retention, that they came in, and you'll see those next quarter, in the first quarter of the current fiscal year. We have a lot of new things going on in Vista, a lot of new events coming up, including our Vista Vintage Makers Market, which is our next VVBA event, to be held on October 16th. In addition to VVMM, we have VNO, we like Vs at Vista Village Business Association. Vista Night Out is a program that will be held in the DDR property, collaboration of food, live music, bringing in some of our vendors from Taste of Vista, bringing them back during the course of the year to really create a fun atmosphere. back during the course of the year to really create a fun atmosphere and promote people in both historic downtown DDR and up and down Santa Fe to really get involved, offer specials that will entice people to come. Maybe they go to Flying Pig for dinner, and then they come over and listen to the band, which will be in the Sinoplis Courtyard area. And then there's three different fundraising events, including Casino Night, which just got the save-the-date out on Facebook today, November the 6th. So VVBA has a bright future. We have a very involved and engaged board. Part of that is each and every program we are doing needs to have a board champion. We need to know that the board is going to back the event as well as sponsors, and event-goers will be present. We are working Lev Gershman with New City America alongside of the city, and Kevin and his staff, with regards to the community benefit district that we hope to get more information on in the very near future. I'm now under contract. I came in as the interim executive back in February, and the interim is now lifted, and I'm here for the duration of this fiscal year. I look forward to being part of VVBA and Vista for many years to come. And finally, we received the approval of our 1617 forecast work plan. The last thing I wanted to touch on was, part of our RFP, our Request for Proposal, was becoming a city of makers, made in Vista, being homegrown. So much of what our community is, is local artists, brewers, farm-to-table restaurants, and so forth. We have two of those retailers on our board that will help us obtain t-shirts, hats, Vista Pride hats, that will have the City of Makers concept, the Made in Vista concept. And then those will be able to be sold at our various festivals throughout the year, as well as at their two establishments twice and contrived to charm in between our festivals. So I want to thank you, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Do you have any questions? No, so I guess that's, I guess that, we don't need any action on that, do we? No, just receive and file. But thank you so much for your update.
Thank you.
You're being very successful, and we're very happy about that.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to your new projects.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Our next discussion item is, D2 is Crime-Free Multifamily Housing Program. Kathy Valdez, our city clerk, is going to provide our staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. The item before you is reintroducing the crime-free multi-housing program. You first heard about it on June 28th. And while we received some support from the council, you asked us to make some changes, which we have. This particular program is being introduced because it supports the city council goals of enhancing law enforcement services, public safety, as well as the multifamily housing properties. The particular program, crime-free multi-housing, was selected because it's utilized in over 20,000 cities across the United States, as well as in other countries. And we've had some local success. We talked about last time of those properties that were currently participating or fully certified. We've had reductions in calls from service from between 20% to 74%. As a reminder, the four components of the program are an eight-hour training for the owners, managers, or other staff, implementing goods screening procedures, as well as the crime-free lease addendum, conducting a crime prevention through environmental design inspection, and making required changes that are related to safety, and also having an annual tenant Under the proposed ordinance, the city would have the authority to require complexes with 10 or more units to participate in the program if they exceed the service call threshold, which is identified as calls for service equal to 25% or more of the units, and need two six-month periods within an 18-month timeframe. As requested, we've developed a list of excluded calls. These are calls that would typically not be considered in determining whether a property has exceeded their threshold. The calls identified here will qualify as excluded calls unless subsequent investigation determines that criminal activity related to the multifamily development precipitated or contributed to the call. Conversely, there also will be calls on our common call list that may be excluded because we identify that they're not related to the property. For instance, a suspicious person that's contacted on the street, they might just be passing by, have nothing to do with the complex itself. So it works both ways there. The proposed ordinance has also been modified to authorize the city manager to refine the policies on lease addendums by written rule. To clarify the city's intent, the policy you see here has been added. This provides some leeway, specifically in the case of domestic violence related to how lease addendums may be enforced and what those requirements might be. So this gives opportunity for the complex to work with the city and say, I've got a residence here, we don't want to evict a victim of domestic violence, you know, what can we do? We want to make sure it's not held against us. And so we'll certainly work with them. We want to make sure the victims are protected. Unfortunately, the Sheriff's Department has a relationship with Women's Resource Center, with the Domestic Violence Response Team, and both the city and Sheriff's Department work closely with Vista Community Clinic and North County Lifeline. So there's some support services that can be brought in to assist as well. In addition to address concerns about residents being reluctant to call for service, we've added a non-retaliation clause, which you see here. So that will protect tenants against any adverse action for reporting criminal or suspicious As requested, we include a commencement date, which would be the 60th day after adoption, as well as a sunset date, which is one year from the commencement date. To continue the program without interruption, city council action extending the ordinance would be required at least 30 days prior to the sunset date. We are also seeking approval for proposed program fees. The fees here are for cost recovery, and they are adjusted based on the size of the complex, because larger complexes tend to take more staff time. And there's also an appeal fee if folks are appealing different aspects of the ordinance. We did include within the ordinance opportunity for staff to work with folks. So if they're having difficulty, they need to put a fence in, and the contractor said it would be done, you know, at the end of the month, and now we find out it's going to be two months. Obviously, we're not going to make them appeal, so we'll work with them and do an extension for them and things like that. So in conclusion, staff requests the city council's approval of the proposed ordinance. The program will benefit both the residents, as well as the owner and the surrounding community. We feel strongly that this program will help give people a safe environment to live in, which we think everybody deserves. So I'm available to answer any questions.
I have two speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers first? Okay. So we'll start with John Byron.
On behalf of North Coastal Prevention Coalition, I'm here to support proposed crime-free multi-housing ordinance. This ordinance would allow the city to require owners and managers of rental properties with 10 or more units to complete the crime-free multi-housing program if their properties exceed the threshold of calls for service from the Sheriff's Department. NCPC staff has actively participated with Vista Crime Prevention Specialists in promoting the current voluntary program with residents, assisting with tenant meetings, providing information to local resources. NCPC believes that the program helps strengthen the communication between property owners, tenants, law enforcement, and the community agency, in addition to reducing crime and strengthening the community's safety. NCPC is pleased that the program will remain free for any property who wants to get it, not mandated in, and will continue to encourage all owners and managers to participate. The proposed ordinance will give the city and law enforcement additional tools to help ensure that properties with high calls for service take effective steps to address those problems and improve the quality of life for their tenants. The mission of NCPC is to prevent the harms of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista through community action, education, support, and collaboration. Having property owners and residents actively engaged in promoting safe and drug-free housing is a direct alignment with our mission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Avell Brown? She was second. Oh. It's okay. Okay, one down. I thought she was on the other stack.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to say how grateful we are to see this coming forward. This is awesome. We have a lot of apartment units around our home, and we haven't really had a way to help them become better. And so I think that, I know staff put a lot of time into this, and it sounds like the way it's written is that the city manager does have the ability to look at this and make adjustments if we find out that that 18-month period, I could see it actually being two, two and a half years before you could get somebody into a program if they had two six-months skip months. So I do think that that may be something we want to look at, maybe in the future if we find out that that isn't adequate. But I just want to say thank you so much. We really appreciate this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Joe Poole?
All right, let's try this again. Thank you very much for your patience. So I'm speaking on the crime-free multifamily housing program. It was not involved, I just found out about this last June 28th, when the council talked about it. On that day, the San Diego Apartment Association came forward and voiced their concerns about these type of ordinances, because it intimidates people from calling law enforcement. The day, coincidentally enough, right, the day after the council meeting on June 29th, NPR ran a story about these very ordinances. The story was of Lakeisha Briggs, a mother of a three-year-old daughter who was a victim of domestic violence. She was told when she called law enforcement that that was her first strike, and more strikes would lead to her eviction. This nuisance ordinance not only intimidated her and kept her from calling law enforcement, but it was also used against her by her abuser, who exploited her with the threat of eviction. Finally, one night during a fight, she ended up outside of her house, bleeding when her abuser cut her throat with broken glass. She needed to be lifelighted to the hospital. The ACLU filed a complaint in this case, and the law was repealed. Additionally, Pennsylvania enacted a law to protect victims, and a new approach was adopted by the city for police and agencies to work together and more closely with residents to address underlying problems. These efforts have resulted in Pennsylvania in Norristown in a reduction in crime. According to Sandag records, domestic violence in Vista has increased 61% in four years, between 2011 and 2015. That's 61% in four years. These are very disturbing numbers for our community, for the sheriffs who have to answer these service calls, and for the families and individuals. Ordinances like this result in eviction and banishment, and merely relocate people without solving the underlying issues. Without solving the issues, individuals and law enforcement are at continued risk from domestic violence and other crime incidences. Other impacts of this ordinance will include increased homelessness, increased instability in families and for children, and with an eviction on their record, considerable more difficulty in securing future housing. All of these effects will contribute to continued violence, crime, blight, increased service calls, and on and on, just not in the multifamily housing units. I note that the city acknowledged the validity of these concerns, as we saw in the PowerPoint, right? So you acknowledge that this is truly a concern, and we are in a city with a 61% increase in domestic violence. Tonight, I ask the city to withhold passing this, so there can be further study of domestic violence in our community, and understand if this ordinance will really make our community and individuals safer, and law enforcement safer, or will only scatter the problems. If it is passed, I hope you do review the people who are evicted at the end of this process.
Thank you. Councilmember Franklin?
I think maybe we all received a copy of that article from Citizen. I read it through, and I immediately contacted the staff and asked them, you know, what say you? And I might not have been the only member of the council, but I was one who asked for that particular issue to be addressed. I never want to put someone who is a victim in a situation where they are intimidated or feel that they cannot call for help. I want to commend the city, though. I think we've, I think the staff's done a good job of attempting to address these concerns. Ultimately, it's going to come down to how this is administered, and it's one of the reasons that I asked for a sunset. Afterthought and discussion, I don't believe that one year is appropriate for the sunset. I think it's too short a period of time for us to acquire sufficient data and understanding. So I'd like to suggest that that be at least two years, and that, I'm proposing that that be the only change. But I think we would have more data and better understand the effect of the law, and it would be a more appropriate time for us to review and consider renewing the ordinance. But in a general sense, you know, I can't tell you, and all the citizens of Vista, how deeply concerned that I personally am at the idea of any person who's victimized having a reluctance for any reason to call the sheriff and get help. But I think that the staff did a great job. They came up with the idea of the anti-retaliation clause, and I think the staff has heard the concern. I think the council's heard the concern. I certainly have. I take it very seriously. You know, the other side of this coin, you know, as I was discussing this, somebody said to me, what about the family that lives next door, and the children that might live in the apartment next door, and the environment that they have to grow up in, and what about their right to live in a safe environment? This is a really, really difficult problem. It's difficult to be on our end of this question, but certainly, we have to make efforts, and we have to experiment to reduce crime in our community. I think public safety is the most important thing you elected us to see to, and so I think it's a good effort. I think we've got something that's a good proposal here. I think that we should give it a shot for two years, and then I think we should look very carefully at the results. And I would agree, I would certainly be very interested in the case studies of individuals who are evicted. That does not fall on deaf ears. Seeing to the needs of people who are most in need in our community is absolutely our, you know, our moral responsibility as well. But we have, to have to balance that extremely, you know, that extreme moral imperative with the need to keep people safe and create a safer community and uplift our community as a whole. So with that, you know, I'm moving to adopt the ordinance with the single change that the sunset be a two-year instead of a one-year sunset, so that we'd have a better opportunity to understand the data. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have, I do have a couple of questions for you. We have had this program as an optional program for how many years now?
I referenced my notes to give you the right date. Since 1995, the Sheriff's Department has been offering the program.
And 1995, so a very long time. And we have, how many, we have eight complexes in the city that are opting into the program at this point, that they have chosen to participate?
Since our last meeting, we've had a few additional, so there's 10. But I should say, over the years, that they have had folks on and off of the program. So a few years ago, they indicated that they wanted to make sure everyone was fully in compliance, and they basically started with a clean slate. So I could certainly get some historical information about how many other complexes have participated in the past, but these folks who are participating now are fully implementing the program, and we feel confident with that.
Okay. Thank you for that. But out of, I think it's 160-some complexes that we have in the city of Vista that would qualify, because they have 10 or more units. So out of 160, eight to 10 in a given year, probably not any more than that, I'm guessing, have participated. have participated. The others have not, which is a great difference. Have we talked to those complexes about why they do not want to participate? What is their rationale for not participating?
I haven't specifically. Our Crime Prevention through the Sheriff's Department is the group that works with them directly. I think that most of the time, the managers are very supportive of it, and I believe, and it may not be correct, that's my sense, is that they're concerned about the cost if they do a septic assessment, that they may be asked to do a lot of changes, which may or may not be correct. I think it's the fear, they haven't had the assessment done to know.
Okay. So, I would be curious to see, and as Councilwoman Franklin stated, that this is a hard decision to be on this side of the dais for, because it's very, it's a conflict for me, because I know that we are tasked with public safety, and the family and the little girl living next door has the right to have a healthy and a safe place to live. On the other hand, I see this as a little bit far-reaching on government, and it's an unfunded mandate. We are mandating that these people participate in a program, and then we're going to make them pay for the privilege to do so. And those two things, I find a little bit in conflict with what we as a government agency should be doing. So, trying to marry that up with the right of the family with public safety is sometimes in a little bit of a conflict. But I agree that if we have the sunset on this to see how this program works, and I agree that a year isn't long enough with these particular restrictions. And there are particular identifiers along the way and at the end of the sunset that I would like to see. I want some hardcore data regarding the crime rates in these complexes during this time period versus prior to this, and in comparison regionally perhaps. So, I guess I'll just leave it at that. This is, this is not an easy decision to make when you're looking at all the variables about this. But having a sunset in it makes me feel a little bit better that if this isn't working, or this truly is too much of an overreach, or there are, even with a clause in it with a retaliation prevention, sometimes that doesn't work. I worked in domestic violence for many, many years, and I've seen some things out there. So, I don't know how effective a clause is going to be in reality. Sometimes people's reality is different from what our reality is. So, I'm just going to keep a little open mind on this a little bit for right now, and we can revisit this. And I'll let it go at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. Reiterating my colleagues' comments and concerns, I'm going to bring up a couple of other topics that I'm not too happy with in this, and that is, the fee for the smaller complexes, the 10-to-50-unit complexes, really is over half of what it is for a 200-plus unit complex. So, I would rather, I know there's some fixed costs in this for doing it for a small complex or a larger complex, but I'd rather see that have a little bit more of a progressive sliding scale with owners that have a 10-unit complex not bear as much of a burden for what's probably a lower unit rent charge than the larger complexes that would be able to easily absorb that. Additionally, I think some background in terms of, or at least some comment, that this isn't designed to impact every complex in the city. This is for those complexes that have problematic levels of crime and calls for service. Could you give maybe an example of the number of complexes that you think the city will be implementing this on in the first year, potentially?
We're expecting maybe three to five every six-month period, so six to 10 in a year.
So, again, we're not looking at the new types of complexes that don't have a crime problem, where they're well-managed complexes, to where you have professional property managers that are probably already addressing a lot of the concerns that we want the complexes to address. Would that be a fair assessment?
Yeah, they want to be mandated. We are encouraging everyone to participate, and some of the new properties that are on will be asked to be part of it. So, they'll sign on from the start, yes. There not going to be mandated into it, so they'll voluntarily participate.
Right. So, a lot of the newer complexes that we built in the city in the last few years don't meet those thresholds to even look at, because they're professionally managed, they have property management groups that keep the problems that we're trying to address and mandate on some complexes potentially to a minimum already. So, I think that's important to recognize, that this isn't going to affect all 150-plus complexes in the city. We're talking about six to 10 potentially that meet this call-for-service threshold level that would be mandated to participate in the program. These, there's several complexes that I can probably think of off the top of my head that would warrant this. These aren't necessarily places where, I think Deputy Mayor Rigby, you brought up the fact that we're potentially mandating them to participate, and then we're going to make them pay for it. I think the other flip side of that to look at is that they're taking away currently, because of the poor property management, the fact that they don't have fencing, or their landscaping is creating opportunities for more crime to occur, drug use, and they're not properly policing their tenants, that it takes away law enforcement resources from the rest of the community, that we really need to have those resources out on, the patrol deputies out on the street. Now, as the one speaker brought up and sent the article about the domestic violence, that's definitely something that as a city and staff, I know we're going to work towards to ensure that those types of calls don't count in a negative way for the tenants, and they're not evicted improperly, and that we're going to work with Crime Prevention and the Sheriff's Department and other resources to ensure that we are actually able to focus on those particular cases to make sure that we have a positive outcome. On the rest of this, I'm concerned with the other types of property crimes, drug use, and the other, we're going to call it unsavory living conditions that have been allowed to be created because of mismanagement and poor property management and out-of-town, derelict property owners that are putting a negative impact on our community and the rest of the community, because they're drawing law enforcement resources from the rest of the city. So, I'm supportive of it tentatively. I think having a two-year review period, I'm not sure I would like to call it a sunset clause to have it automatically go away, because part of this is, it's a rolling time period for review. I would like to have it come back in a year to see, just for a review, of how the program's being implemented, how it's progressing, and reevaluated at that point as well, but not have a sunset date in one year. I'm more okay with the two-year time period.
It's interesting, because that was, my notes that I wrote were the sunset, because that, if something's working, why do you sunset it? And if it's not working, you, why don't you just, you cancel it? You know, we didn't have to keep going. And, you know, if it's not working, then we say, "This isn't working, and we aren't going to do it anymore." So, I don't know why, you know, the sunset date. But I'd like to have yearly reports, no matter how long it goes on, a yearly report, and see where we are and who we've been dealt, what we've been dealing with, and I think that that would be important. So, those were, those were my notes. And so, I see I have Deputy Mayor Rigby again.
I just, I have one more question, and I don't know who it would be to. In California, we pay a ton of taxes to the state, and they keep a lot of it for various programs that they're willing to give back to the community if we meet certain requirements. And I know that we get some grant monies on behalf of the Sheriff's Department to use for gang units and other things. I would like to see perhaps if we can find some grant monies that we can bring some of our tax money back to Vista that would help pay for this program. Could we look into that, make that part of it, just to at least investigate what programs? Because I'm sure there's got to be money out there for this.
We could certainly explore that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin?
Well, the staff made the point, but I just wanted to reiterate the fact that this program is free for any property owner who decides to voluntarily come into compliance with it. So, any property owner that does not want to pay the fee has the ability to call the city and voluntarily participate. So, I view that as the good actor discount. If you are doing the right thing and you want to make the property that you own and manage a better place for families, then you come into voluntary compliance. And, you know, I think I have very little sympathy for the property owner that doesn't want to pay for proper lighting or proper fencing or other safety measures. You know, frankly, as I think about it, if this is a tool to cause some, you know, out-of-town owner to have to make investments that are for the safety and well-being of their tenants, I don't have a problem with that. You know, we're not, we're not asking people to put in, you know, we're not asking to paint all the doors purple, or, you know, put in frivolities, or, you know, build swimming pools, or, we're just asking them to put lighting in to keep people safe. They should be doing that anyway, we shouldn't have to ask. And I couldn't agree more with the Deputy Mayor about not wanting to impose more burdens of government, but I view this as narrowly targeted only to, and really the only people that should be in the crosshairs are people who are what I think of as bad actors, because they have not done what they should have done. So, I think that free, the fact that it's free to all those who volunteer, I think there's a very important consideration for all the property owners who are thinking about this decision, how it impacts them. And the other, I just wanted to point out, and I very much agree, is there any one-year reporting or annual reporting that's already a part of this ordinance?
It's not specifically written in, no, but we're happy to provide annual reports.
Well, I'm hearing agreement, and I'm certainly in agreement with the idea of adopting a one-year reporting and having the staff give us annual updates and maybe a presentation on how this is going.
Would that, just to jump in, would that, would you be in favor of eliminating the sunset clause then with the annual reporting, or do you still want?
No, I want to make a separate comment about the sunset. I think the sunset is important. You know, any of us may or may not be on the council two years from now, but a sunset is an active decision for the council to renew. It forces the, instead of simply receiving the information and saying, "Thank you very much," and we go to the next item, this forces a future council to take an affirmative action, and I think that that's important. I, you know, it's not my job or my privilege to tie the hands of a future council. I want to put the burden on the future council to reanalyze this subject matter and to make a decision with the same amount of investment and concern as we have put into it. And that's the reason I'm asking the council to adopt a two-year sunset, because I believe that it will cause whoever sits on this council two years from now to truly have to look at this and really want to understand what the impact has been, and understand that it's incumbent upon them to educate themselves and take an affirmative action to continue it. I really do see the potential to hurt people in this. I see great potential to help people, but I really, I really want to cause the council in two years to make a very invested decision, and that's why I'm asking the council to include a two-year sunset.
One other thing I would like to add possibly is to be sure that when, that the owners are notified when they get a notice of violation or whatever it is, you know, however we do that, if we could make sure that they get a notice of that, so that they know when they get their first notification or whatever, you know, I think that would be a good idea to be, so they, because some of them are maybe out of the area, and they need to be notified if there's problems going on, so.
We plan to do that.
Okay. But it isn't written in there, so.
It's not formally in the ordinance.
As long as we're writing things in, can we write that in?
So, I'd like to renew my motion to approve the ordinance with a two-year sunset and also including a one-year, an annual report to the council.
Can we write in that the owners get notification when they're?
Certainly.
Okay. Okay, I'll second that. Do I have any other, I don't see any other, any other discussion? Okay, I guess I'll, I'll call for the question, then. Please cash your votes. The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Aguilera excused. So, that moves us on to our next thing, which is, our next discussion item, D3, which is our proposed general plan amendment and zone change at 1205 Melrose Way. And John Conley, Director of Community Development, will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed general plan amendment and zone change at 1205 Melrose Way. The site is located on the north side of Melrose Way, west of South Melrose Drive. Its address is 1205. There's three parcels involved, which are shown in the aerial photo here, surrounded by red. It's about 2.6 acres in size. It's currently developed with one single-family home. Surrounding uses include single-family half-acre residential lots to the west and south, the Simone Adventist Church to the east, and Breeze Hill Elementary, and the Charlemont condominium complex to the north. The property is currently designated low density in our general plan, which allows up to two units per acre. It's also correspondingly zoned to state residential, which allows a half-acre minimum lot size. The proposal before you is to consider or discuss a general plan designation to high-density residential, which would allow 21 units to the acre, as well as corresponding zoning of multi-residential 21, which would allow 21 units to the acre. The property owner is proposing to develop the site with approximately 54 condominium units. A conceptual site plan is shown up here on the overhead on the right. It would include about six buildings. It would be two-story attached units with access via Melrose Way and a private internal street, and there's also an elevation there. The applicant is here this evening and has a much more detailed presentation for the council as well. This item was scheduled for discussion following submittal of a request in July of this year. All the property owners within 500 feet of the site have been notified of this discussion item tonight, and we sent out a notice to our email list for planning. That notice was also posted on the site about 10 days prior to this meeting. The staff does not support this recommendation or this request to change the land use designation at this location. It would be inconsistent with general plan policies, protecting the character of the surrounding single-family residential neighborhood, and therefore, we're not supportive of it. However, we are requesting direction from the city council tonight relative to the applicant's request, so that we can provide some direction to them before a formal application is submitted. For the council's information, a similar request was submitted to the Planning Commission in 2007, and the minutes from that meeting are also included in your packet this evening. And that completes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Okay, we have 27 speakers tonight, so I would like to, we have the applicant and the... So, you're all for it, right?
[laughter]
Okay, shh. Okay. I'm just teasing, okay? So, the first two will be the applicant and the property owner, and after that, I'm going to request two minutes, each speaker two minutes. So, we're going to start with the applicant, which is Jeffrey Rosen. Could Taylor Horry come up and talk to our city clerk also? Taylor Horry?
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and I want to thank everybody for showing up regardless of your opinion, because progress is always a result of good discussion and participation. So, I do thank you. And I thank staff also. They've been very helpful throughout this process. What we have before you is a proposed for-sale housing project as opposed to a rental project in the neighborhood. We've already seen where the site is located, so I will not dwell too much on that. The existing photos, there's an old home that the owner, Dr. Djorjovich, who's a local veterinarian and was longtime owner of property and was longtime resident in the city of Vista, also takes care of, is a surgeon on dogs and cats and other animals, so he provides a great benefit to families around the area. In the back part of the property, you'll see the Charlemont condominiums that the property abuts to. Going back to the first map, one of the things that we looked at this property is that it's a natural extension of the condominiums that had been built 26 years ago on the Charlemont condominiums. The genesis for this project came when the owner was renting out the house a number of years ago, and in just a couple of days, had 41 applications. And curious why in this old house on an antiquated septic system, why is everybody, you know, jumping to get into this home? Found out the proximity to the church, the school, work areas in the area, that's what people were looking for, was to be able to get some sort of housing close to where they lived, worked. lived, worked, or worshiped. The street, as you probably know, is the improvement stop at the school. So the street widening and those kinds of improvements that would occur on the development of this property are just undone at this point in time. The conceptual design, that if this project goes forward, we'll work very closely with staff, but the idea is to create something that is traditional and in keeping with the historical architecture in this area, not bringing anything avant-garde that would stick out, keeping a two-story profile that would be in keeping as you would go along Melrose Way, that would be in keeping with the two-story homes that are existing in the area, not creating something that would stand out from a height standpoint. The benefits that we see and the reason for coming back to you for discussion is to increase homeownership. Vista, like most communities around these days, there's a shortage of housing and environmentally sensitive housing with solar and the energy efficiencies that are put into newer housing. There's a changing buyer profile. So before the bubble, people were going for big homes, big properties, money was easy to get financing. Those days are long gone, maybe for good reasons, don't know. But the reality is, is you have a lot more single-parent homeowners, smaller families, and they want to live where they're not doing long commutes. Traffic's always a hot button issue in any community. So when people are able to live closer to where their children go to school, their church, shopping's local, is always a benefit. And again, we look at this site, because of being next to the church, next to the school, within walking distance of CVS and some of the other areas, that this would be a good use of that property to create housing. The lack of housing supply results in higher home prices when you're squeezed. And what we, what we've seen with the lack of new housing supply is an increase in apartment rentals and very high rents. So the three-bedroom unit at Avalon, which was of a comparable size to what the units in the proposed project would be, 1,400 some odd square feet, their rents are more than what a mortgage would be if somebody could afford a 5% or 10% down payment FHA loan. They would be spending less money and own a home than what they were paying in Avalon one block away, and, and obviously in a much lower density type of development. And a lot of that gets back to the lender's constraints. We all know the big banks and the lenders were very eager to take our taxpayer dollars to bail them out when they went under, but they've been very slow to put that money back out into the community with their high restrictions. So the jumbo loans for the bigger lot homes, again, if you were to develop loan houses on these half-acre parcels, you're going to be building 3,000 square foot homes, maybe even larger. You're going to be looking at sales prices, 7, 8, $900,000. Now you're looking at a whole different economic and a different type of demographic and one that is not really where the marketplace is today. So we wanted to very much see what we can do to increase homeownership in this neighborhood. Jobs housing balance. We have the courts, the new downtown court is being purposely built without expansion. They're looking to basically future expansion to come from Vista and the other outlying court systems. There's obviously other government facilities in the area. Melrose Road has a number of employment areas, plus you have the school and the churches in the area. So the idea again is what can we do on these properties to mitigate the number of traffic trips, the length of commute times, especially when you have a single parent home to drive long distance to get to work, and then trying to cut back in time through rush hour to pick up children at school or to take them to after-school events. It's getting tougher and tougher to do those things. So we always look from a planning and a planning background as what can we do to help the jobs housing balance? Move-up opportunity. From a condominium standpoint, the last condominium was built in the area where Charlemont, in 1990. And a lot of those units are small, well under 1,000 square feet. You have homeowners, and there may be some here tonight, that love this neighborhood, but maybe would like to have a newer home or a larger home. There's nothing in this specific neighborhood. So again, we're looking at being complementary to the Charlemont by creating a project that's in keeping with the character, but providing a newer home and homes that might be slightly larger than the home that they have today. And so those items, trying to increase homeownership, take advantage of good planning with jobs housing balance, correcting the imbalance of rental versus homeownership. All the new projects in the area have been rental. So you have the 221 Avalon apartments recently built. Silvergate is proposing to tear down the strip retail and replace it now with 88 rental apartments. So again, it's more rental rental, nothing for the couple or the family that wants to own a home. Our project, unlike Avalon and Silvergate, which have all their traffic along Breeze Hill Road, our property will not have any access to Breeze Hill Road, so will not add any traffic along there. And with that.
Please be polite, please.
Thank you. And so with that, I know a lot of people want to speak. I'll answer any questions that you may have, but thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. The next I'd like to hear from the owner, would he like to speak now, or do you want to? Dr. Zorian? Doctor, your last name?
Georgievich.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank city council members as well as members of planning department and Vista residents for giving me this opportunity to share my vision for 1205 Melrose Way development. Opening a Melrose Drive from Park Central Drive to Palomar Airport Road several years ago significantly increased importance as a major artery connecting Vista and Casbet and south of Encinitas. Parallel with that, South Vista increased the number of shopping centers, business offices, churches, retirement communities, but no housing development, apartments, condominiums, duplexes, or fourplexes to support significant commercial booming. In addition, latest housing crash put many families from owning to rental status. Back 2004, I did purchase 1205 Melrose Way. Immediately after that, 1205, I purchased property on my government and then additional property on Melrose Way. So I accumulated kind of, as a previous report says, 2.7, maybe almost three acres on the other side. My main reason for development is this. Back 2004, when I received approximately 41, 42 rental applications, most likely due to church and elementary school proximity, majority of those applicants were parents with a schoolchildren, some of them single parents, and some of them colored students, some of them military personnel and workers nearby retail stores and restaurants. Today, I can only imagine what would happen if I do the same things. People, and particularly single parents, owning the house next to a school but not renting, will significantly increase their own convenience, especially when it's walking distance from their school and church, go back and forth without using a car key and turning a fossil fuel. Buying versus rental, by today's standards, with current low interest rate, is definitely cheaper and more affordable. In conclusion, both cities and current residents in nearby areas would benefit from it, in my opinion. First of all, it would increase economical impact to the local retail stores and businesses, but directly through, indirectly through sales taxation, physically help city. On the other side, property taxation is also increased up to 50 times from almost 600, 700 to 30,000 a year, but also help city budget. High-end building will have the same street view like the rest of the residence, so we wouldn't really misshape the appearance of the street, but newer and sophisticated appearance, we also would call that smart home, with smart home features. I am sure the development of the property from the, we're going to take this property from the golfers and all those squirrels that they occupy land in this very point, as you see on the pictures previously, and bring significantly improve the street, improve the street appearance, and I'm sure that also increase the property value in nearby area, because everybody would like to get in nice street. Melrose Way, approximately 20 years ago, a little bit less than 20 years ago, when I get in Melrose Way, nothing has been done with that Melrose Way, and I'm sure we have a plenty of residents right now over here. The only what we've done, we put asphalt once, and that was it. All the houses stay the same, backyards mostly look like a, very old, is not taken care properly. So I really believe that adding something like this would help us and help everybody around. Well, I'm sure some people have different opinion, but that's the reason why we're here to discuss. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now we're going to, I'll start with all of the speakers, and each one of you will have two minutes, so please keep your, your remarks in that amount of time. So we'll start with Priscilla Isaroche. Priscilla? And the next Dale West, next person is Dale Weston. What I'll do is I'll read one name and I'll read, followed by a couple of other names, so you can get ready, kind of get out and get ready. If you would even stand over here would be okay. So Dale Weston would be after her, and then followed by Greg Collins.
Mayor and city council member, it's quite an honor to be here and also in this gorgeous I have lived in Melrose Way for 56 years, and we bought it, my husband and I bought it, before Vista became a city. And it used to be called Come to Vista for the Rancheros, by a Rochetta. And so we, we bought this acre and a quarter, and we have lived there ever since. But one of the things that's so nice about Vista is that on Melrose Way, you can still own a little ranchero, a half acre. Isn't it wonderful that we can still have a little land that we can raise our children, so they can still play ball and still have a little room to run around? Now, in that 57 years, I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of changes in Vista. Some of it is good, some of it, I'm sure that you will agree, isn't quite so good. But nevertheless, we love Melrose Way. It's the last, I think the last, of the Rancheros in Vista. But one of my greatest concern is the school. Now I understand about the redevelopment and how the city obtained that.
I'm going to wrap up. Your two minutes is up, okay?
My greatest fear is the children with any additional construction there. And you know how children run around, and all we need to have is one accident on Melrose Way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dale Weston, followed by Greg Collins, followed by Norm Collins.
Hello, I'm Dale Weston. As a resident of over 50 years on Melrose Way, I've seen a lot of changes over the years, which have been mostly well-planned. However, today, we need to look at the facts and ask ourselves if 50 condos of over 100 more cars on Melrose Way per day is worth the sacrifice of our quality of life? I say no. Fact number one, currently daily traffic counts from Breeze Hill Elementary, parents picking up and dropping off nearly 780 kids a day, that's over 300 cars. This has been a burden on Melrose Way and other neighboring streets since the mid-1990s, when the Vista Unified School District stopped offering free busing to schools. Fact number two, Melrose Drive on a daily average which intersects Melrose Way has over 33,000 vehicles. These drivers are too impacted during the school drop-off and pickup times when traffic blocks the turn lanes from Melrose Drive onto Melrose Way. Fact number three, many residents that live across the street from Breeze Hill School currently have to deal with irate parents or caregivers fighting for parking. Many have shared with me that they have witnessed vulgar arguments in front of children, and in some cases, these arguments have nearly escalated into physical conflict. Not to mention trying to get in and out of their, their own driveway is oftentimes impossible. Fact number four, there are several residents on Melrose Way that work in construction and drive dump trucks, heavy equipment, tractor trailers, and other large vehicles through the current tangled mess at Breeze Hill School. Fact number five, it helps the, there's three horse farms near our neighborhood. What will the impact on the county maintained roads that currently have no stop signs at the intersections of Ridge Road, Sunset Drive, Melrose Way and Sunset Drive, Sunset Drive and Marzone Drive, Sunset Drive and Emerald Drive, Sunset Drive and Bush Drive, as well as the intersection of Sunset Drive and Sky Haven Drive, in which many of these intersections are already dangerous with current traffic flow and have several accidents, and many of these areas are already planned for multi-unit housing developments? Fact number six, 20 years ago.
Your time is up, sir.
Okay, we have our traffic calm area. We have to dive out of our way just to take our trash down and get our mail every day. Thank you.
Greg Collins, followed by Nora Collins, Nora Collins, is Nora here, followed by Taylor Horry.
All right, thank you. Somebody needs to check their facts real quick before they even say that they can go to this school. I teach at Breeze Hill, taught there for the last 21 years. We're impacted. We have over 850 students, and if you cannot get into a classroom because of our, the way our union works, we don't take you. And you have to, we don't bus you, you have to figure out a way to get to another school. Or say, "Sorry, our classrooms are, are full." So saying that the school is right here is great, that's not always the case. We've always been impacted. Lake is impacted, Breeze Hill and Lake, everybody wants to go there. Everybody wants to live in our neighborhood because we like the space, but we are impacted, and we've got, what, more apartments coming down the pike? We're going to, I don't know where these people are going to go to school. We don't have the building space. Like I said, I've been there 21 years, getting ready to start next week. I know my classes will be full, I have 34 students in my classroom, and there's no room, so somebody moving in in a condo is not going to be in my classroom. And I do take exception when he says our, our neighborhood looks rundown. His property looks rundown. I don't know if he does it on purpose or what, but we pride ourselves in our property. Thank you.
Nora Collins, followed by Taylor Horry, followed by Mary Mendrigas.
Good evening. I've been in Vista my entire life. I went through Grapevine, I went through Washington, I graduated from Vista High, went with your daughter, and I love Vista. We raised our children here. Eight years ago, we decided to, to move over to Melrose Way. We had a half acre. We've improved, we've had big plans. We love the community there. It's a neighborhood. I love going for my runs, seeing my neighbors, getting to wave to them, and feeling a part of community. And we're talking about Vista, how we want to keep it special, how we want people to love Vista. You love Vista because of the people who are here. And if we bring in so many more people to that one little area, it's going to be dangerous. We're not going to be able to get to know our neighbors, and then the whole feel is going to be different. Safety is an issue. We live on the corner. We see cars whizzing up and down that street all the time. And I think you need to really consider the safety of our children and of, of the families that live there currently. Is one person's benefit financially worth the rest of us suffering? Thank you.
Taylor Horry, followed by Mary Mendrigas, followed by Sean Marie Daly.
First, I'd like to say thank you to the city council for having this open forum tonight and hearing out your constituents. My name is Taylor Horry, and I have lived in Vista my entire life. I work for a company that was founded in Oceanside and still resides in North County, and have recently relocated to Carlsbad Village. I think it's safe to say I have a vested interest in the tri-city area. I also feel the need to qualify that I am not anti-builder or anti-development. I work in an industry that simply would not exist if not for new construction. I am pro-change and pro-responsible growth. The key word there being responsible. In the last five years, we have seen explosive high-density growth in Vista, from downtown to Bobbiere, to the two blocks that span my neighborhood, and now we are here tonight to discuss the rezoning of yet another parcel. Nothing exists in a vacuum, and tonight I ask that we just take a breath, take a beat. We have built and built and built, but have we also looked at if our community? We have built and built and built, but have we also looked at, at if our community can support all of its new members? Can our fire department say if there is a fire on a third or fourth story building, or third or fourth story that it has the proper equipment to save them? Can our police force confidently say that we can protect and serve 400 to 500 new residents? Can our roads, water system, public transits and school systems, which now we know we can't, all provide the way they have been for the 24 years I've lived here? We are tossing a rock into a pond and not waiting for the ripples. So again, I politely ask you, as my elected officials, let's wait. Let's see what the greater ramifications of our actions are. Hindsight is 2020. I would rather we wait to look back to say Vista is thriving than look back and say, what have we done? Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Mandrakis, followed by Sean Marie Daly, followed by Kirk Reed.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us this evening. I just wanted to make it known that I am in support of the new construction. And I want to remind people, I know it must be very fearful to have change in anything in your life, but the, the knowledge of having people that do go to the Breeze Hill School are the people that put in the applications to live there. So there are a lot of people that are in the school that want to be in the community. The other thing, as a landlord of a business in Vista for many years, I've gotten to know so many people in the community that are looking forward to, again, remind you, ownership instead of renting. Ownership tends to put a lot more pride in their property and so it's going to be with a lot of thought and a lot of planning involved. It's not going to be something that's going to happen right now, right here. There's going to be a lot of planning and development involved. So again, just thank you for hearing us out. I'm a big supporter. I hear about the strawberry festival. I hear about how you guys want to achieve so much in Vista, which every city wants to do. You can't do that without growing forward. Also, the property is not going to change the development. It's not three or four floors, it's only two, you know? So I want to make sure we have all our facts in place, okay? So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean Marie Daly, followed by Kirk Reed, followed by Roy Pearson.
Good evening. Melrose Way is like a little piece of heaven. It's, everyone has their half acre or larger parcel and that is the character of the neighborhood. And in addition to that, we also have a very small skinny street with no sidewalks. We have the elementary school on the corner, which impacts the road on a daily basis. How are we going to add 54 more units? So I implore every one of you to please come and look at Melrose Way.
Is Kirk Reed here?
Yes, everybody's pretty much voiced mine.
Okay, so you pass? Okay. Then the next person would be Roy Pearson, followed by Meredith Oliver, followed by Nikki Hobson.
I am here to voice my opposition to this development. There is considerable development in that area going on now between the Breeze Hill that is proposed and Avalon. My concern with this new development is 54 more homes and traffic. I don't, I do not believe that this plan fits the general plan at all. It's an area of single-family homes. Breeze Hill is a narrow street, there's poor visibility on it, additional traffic would be a danger to it. My daughter is also a teacher at Breeze Hill and has said the same thing to me several times about the traffic on Breeze Hill now, or excuse me, on Melrose Way now, more traffic would make it even worse. So there is danger to the traffic, or danger to the schoolchildren that attend there. The comment was made in the presentation about getting 40 or 50 applications for that home to rent. My comment might be that maybe people want to rent single-family homes versus condominiums and renting apartments. So homes are what should be built. The businesses that are in the Breeze Hill complex now are closing, so there is no businesses that these people are going to walk to. The children will not go to Breeze Hill because the school is full. Thank you for your consideration.
Meredith Oliver, followed by Nikki Hobson, followed by Tom Fleming. Meredith passes? Okay. Okay, Nikki.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I too oppose the requested zoning change. This is a densely populated area already and, and the problems of parking and traffic will just be exacerbated. Even in the middle of the day, the, the stretch of South Melrose from Breeze Hill Road to the freeway and beyond is seriously congested. During rush hour traffic, it's almost impossible. And then add in the times when the Breeze Hill School parents are dropping off and picking up their students on Melrose Way. You just can't move. Putting 54 additional families there just won't work. People will look for alternative ways of getting in and out, meaning that they will probably use Breeze Hill Road to La Tortuga, to Mer Sopa, and then to Melrose Way. So the other local streets are going to be significantly impacted by this new development, as will parking. These new multifamily developments just never seem to provide a realistic number of parking spaces for their residents. And many of the residents use their garages for storage anyway, instead of parking their cars there. And there is no street parking options on Melrose Way. Melrose Way is a narrow curvy street with no curbs and no sidewalks. Additional high-density development there creates safety hazards hazards for everyone, especially pedestrians, including children who live close enough to walk to school. I urge you to deny the requested zoning change and stick to the original plan. And your decision today will affect the quality of life in Vista for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Fleming, followed by, is this your volunteer Fatu? Is there a person named that? Volunteer Fatu? And then that will be followed by Latuola, Tul, Latuola? Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, good evening. First off, I would like to thank the, the staff for their report and I stand in support of their report of, of rejecting the change to the specific plan that, that has been proposed, the zoning change. As you can see on the map up there, you're looking to take a finger and run it down into a low-density area and make it high-density. It was never designed that way. The best option is to leave it as it was. By doing so, you can put four homes in there, half-acre lots, and make some nice homes. And they don't have to be $700,000 homes. They can build nice homes that middle-income people could, could get into and could enjoy. I know that there's a lot of people, so I won't even take the two minutes, but I am opposed to any change to the, any zoning. I think that bar should be very high when you change zoning that you've already got in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, volunteer Fatu, followed by Latuola, followed by Christine, is it Bemmer?
Good evening. It's an honor to be here. My name is Volunteer Fatu. I'm a first elder of the Vista Samoan Seventh-day Adventist Church. And we have two other churches that run our place. So I'm here to represent our church. I have here in my hand an email that was sent here from my pastors. And when he's not around, I'm taking over. So I came over to bring our, our church are fully not support this, this proposal. Because we're thinking of the, we have two churches in our, running our area, our place, and we are concerned about the young kids, especially the schools around by us. So we're not accepting this proposal. It's for the safety of all the young people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Honor to be here this afternoon. Latuola, Tul Latuola, from the Vista Samoan Church, being a member more than 24 years, 24 years plus. I just want to point out some of the important thoughts that I'm here to represent our church, also to propose and protest against the proposal that was, it's up there. Security of the neighborhood and the families staple environment and properties, property values higher and homes to north, to north behind church and proposed site. Fear of alcoholism, drugs, and with poor element attracted in apartments and non-site management neglected. Idea to bring the neighborhood up for future generation, not down. Consideration of neighborhood desires and business influences abundant and problems with apartments after planning and city council decisions and after for demands in higher policing and sheriff. A country of, County of San Diego, bad elements including child molesters, drugs, et cetera, et cetera. Best use of property for future land values and potential property taxes, also for city of Vista for highest and best use besides, besides community purposes. Presiding positive influence of Adventist and 40 years history of presence since 1978. Better and use daycare, medical clinic or senior since, since, senior home facilities with rise of senior populations since adjoining residential neighborhood churches and elementary school.
Sir, I need you to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. Tremendous traffic, increase in traffic and demands for city policy and fire departments need higher cost of service. Lower air quality standard and high land temperature. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Christine Manier, is it Manier? Manier, followed by Chris Robbins and Michael Murray.
I'm, I'm here to say I'm opposed this project. My house is the one right next to this lot. Oh, I'm sorry. My house is the one right next to this proposed site. The traffic on that street right now with the school, you can't even get down, the, the fire department can barely get down that street. It's, it's narrow. You put 54 units there, there's going to be no parking, there's going to be no parking on the street. People are going to be trying to park in front of all of our houses. This, this land is best used for single-family homes. That's what it's zoned for. If you change the zoning, you're setting a very dangerous precedence because what's to say that my neighbor decides, oh, I'm going to split my lot and put 12 units there and then my neighbor across the street, oh, we're going to put 12 more units there? All these influx of families and no place for kids to go to school? The traffic on that road is going to be horrendous and I'm sorry, but all those new apartments that were already built in the back, we're already seeing the influx on our street. Because now Melrose is so backed up, 5 o'clock in the afternoon, traffic is backed all the way up to Melrose. So what do all those people trying to get to those condos do? They cut down Melrose Way and they fly down our street and take the back roads to get out to our street, to get out to their condos. We have small, it's, it's dangerous. We have small children, the children who go to school. I have a daycare, I don't want to worry about 54 other families or who's going to be renting there. The landlords don't care. I don't have to, I don't want to have to worry about the safety of my kids. My neighbor across the street has a daycare, my neighbor next to me has a daycare, my neighbor down the street has a daycare. We're worried about the safety of the children that we take care of. And not only that, the traffic is going to be the worst. He's been, he bought the property, I was, I've been there 16 years, I've owned that property. I take offense to the fact that he thinks we're all rundown, dingy and it doesn't, maybe it's because we like it that way. That's, that's why we bought. We like it that way. That's our property. But I don't-
Your time is up.
Thank you. But I just don't want my life to be changed because he's here to make a profit. Thank you.
Chris Robbins, followed by Michael Murray, followed by Richard Walker.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I am Chris's next-door neighbor. I'd really like to thank Mr. Conley for-
What is your, are you, can be your name? Are you, oh, you're-
Chris Robbins.
Oh, okay, you are Chris Robbins.
So we're two Chris's and we live next to each other. We sometimes get each other's mail.
Okay.
We trade it back and forth. I'd like to thank Mr. Conley for a well-done report. This item was brought before the Planning Commission back in 2007. And again, I had to take time off from work to come down and talk to the Planning Commission. Took time off work today to come down and talk about this specific request to change the, the zoning. The, the, I don't know how it is for all of my neighbors, but for me to purchase a property that was in this specific zoning area that is a state residential was a big stretch for me. It was a big stretch for me to buy a piece of property back in 2000 that was half an acre. Honestly, I never thought I would be able to do that, but through scrimping, scrimping and saving, making sacrifices, skipping vacations, we were able to purchase this property and to, and we chose it for a specific reason because of where it was, because of the zoning that it was, the kind of rural flavor that it has. My neighbors have horses and so forth, some neighbors have goats, chickens. It's, it's kind of a rural neighborhood. And the fact that we're getting this kind of after the fact, after we've been there, request for zoning change sort of seems like a, a really what I would call a dirty trick for what the, for what the zoning is set up for. I'd like to echo my, my neighbor's comments on the traffic problems are very real, the safety of the children is very real, children walk to school and having all those cars coming out as the children are walking to school to go to work will be something that's dangerous. And I would like to, to hope you support the staff's recommendation to not approve this general plan change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Murray, followed by Richard Walker, followed by Cynthia Walker.
Mayor Ritter, council members. I appreciate all my neighbors here. I just don't know most of you, but I've seen you around and, and especially Priscilla here. I've met Priscilla and I appreciate the things she had to say. One thing that I wanted to bring up was I've done a little research into this and I, not as much as I could because it was mostly today, but I, I know that there was a community identity, identity element done where there was a study for our area and that they, the city actually asked and did a long investigative report on it, on what the neighbors and what the residents would like to have Vista look like, especially that area that we all live in. And there was a report done on that and they, they basically decided that it should stay the way it is with the five, you know, and they, and it continued to be zoned with the half-acre, one-house concept there. And there's reasons for that. And there's reason why there's families that have been living there for not only Priscilla, but I've got three or four other neighbors that have been there over 50 years, their families, they haven't moved. My wife and I were fortunate enough to move in about 12 and a half years ago into just an old farmhouse that was actually moved on to the property over 65 years ago. And there's been a few improvements since then and we've done some of them, but, but it's just the kind of neighborhood that, you know, it just has its own flavor, it's has its own history and for no other reason, just to, just to have those types of neighborhoods around, I think is important to communities. We don't need the condos thrown up, especially in, in the parking traffic and everything else that, that has come up with all these apartments that have gone up and, and I can't, we can't even go to El Pollo Loco anymore because half the parking spots there are taken by the residents of the apartments. Because there's no, there's no, there's no way to find a parking spot unless you want to drive through or something. There's, there's just so much going on there that doesn't really need to be done, need to happen and to increase by another 54 units. And I, and I can- And I, and I can attest to the, the childcare homes that are, that are in the neighborhood. And I worry about those kids too and, and about the kids walking. We see the kids walking on the street to school because there's no sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us speak.
Was, is he, is that Richard Walker?
I'm Cynthia's wife.
Oh, okay, so-
I'm next.
You're Cynthia Walker?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I got it.
Thank you. We live directly across from Breeze Hill Elementary School. And the traffic is insane right there at that corner. As you've already heard over and over and over again, we can't even get in and out of our driveway during the pickup and drop-off. If you add more buildings right almost next door, it's going to be crazy. There's a two-lane street, it's really little. It's, it's just, it's not going to work. It's not going to work. We paid a lot of money for our home. We love our neighborhood, it's a beautiful neighborhood. And it's not rundown at all. It's a gorgeous, we paid half a million dollars for a home. You know, it's, it's a nice neighborhood and I implore you guys to come out like they already did. Please, I don't want to lose my beautiful neighborhood. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Angela Baumback, followed by Eve Baumback, uh, Baumback. And then followed by Stephanie Jackel.
Hello, I'm Angela Baumback. And first of all, I'd like to say that we are very proud of our homes in our neighborhood, every single one of us. And we like our neighborhood the way that it is. We are distinct from Breeze Hill, very distinct. You can tell, there's a definite line of demarcation. Doing this will interrupt that completely, not to mention all the traffic that will happen. My, boy. My husband was hit by a car on that street. It has been seven years and he needs surgery on his spine now from that. That's impossible. We ended up having at least twice a year, as it is right now, we end up with major car accidents that happen on that street. People are literally lifelighted at some points. We can't do this. I also want to address another issue. Because we are not within that 500 feet of the new project, that we were not told that this was happening. The sign on this seemed very hidden. By the time we did notice it, it had been folded over to the point where, and eroded by the sun. We had no idea that this was happening. And I do want to thank the, I don't know who it was, but somebody did come into our neighborhood and let us know that this is happening. Because we just can't do this anymore. We cannot have any more traffic added for everybody's safety and to make sure that what happened to my husband just doesn't happen to anyone else. Thank you so much for your time.
Eve Baumback, followed by Stephanie Jackel, followed by Janet Lenberg.
Hello, I'm Eve Baumback. I've been in my house for 40 years. And I love my house and all my neighbors. And the traffic has been increasingly devastating. There, people are driving like maniacs up and down, including my, my daughter's husband got, she told you, he got severely hurt with an accident. People driving so fast down the street, there's no bumps. And there's school kids there and people are going to school and they're late to pick up their kids, late dropping them off. So they're running around like crazy people down the street and getting hurt, including a police car ran into my mailbox. I mean, this is insane. I am serious. A police car ran into my mailbox, total, it's bad, it's really bad. And if you can please see with your eyes opened, the devastation of the traffic. And we have children here to think about. You know, what is this, about money or safety? Thank you.
Stephanie Jackel, followed by Janet Lenberg, I think, and then by Anita Gamila.
Hi, Stephanie. Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of South Vista Communities. When this resoning proposal came before the Planning Commission in 2007, South Vista Community spoke in opposition to it then, on the basis that it was much too dense for this low-density neighborhood. So here it is again. While it's a good thing that we're talking about condominiums instead of apartments, the same objections remain. In 2007, the zoning change to medium-high density was requested. This time, the request is for high-density. Low-density zoning here, which is now existing, allows two dwelling units per acre. The requested high-density would allow 21 dwelling units per acre. This is too much density for this neighborhood. Please retain the existing zoning and preserve the character of this neighborhood. You've heard how the residents price it.
Janet Lenberg, followed by Andre Gamelin, followed by Chantel Jastro. Looking, looking. No, Janet? Janet Lenberg? Am I pronouncing it right? It's L-E-H-N-B-E-R-G? Janet? Or Janelle? I got it, finally? No? She left, maybe? Okay, how about Andre Gamelin? Followed by Chantel Jastro.
So I don't have too much to say that everybody else hasn't already said, but it's great to see all of my neighbors here, thinking about how special this neighborhood is and realizing that they're thinking about it the same way that I am. And when you think about the, the safety along that road right there, you should realize that during the school hours and the pickups, that that road is entirely parked up with cars picking, picking kids up and things, there's all kinds of activity that's happening there. And so then, when you start adding more units or higher density in there, then I don't really know how people are going, going to even pick up their kids from the school if they can't park there out on the street there. So it's just going to be a real mess. Thank you.
Thank you. Chantel? Is Chantel here? Chantel Jastro? No?
No.
You're going to, oh, you're going to pass? Okay. Okay, well, you are our last speaker. So, wait, I might have one more. Don't, don't go anywhere because you're the last speaker. Okay, Frank Pippardo?
Hello, my name's Frank Pippardo. I live at 765 Las Palmas Drive, which is across Melrose. I can actually see the property from our house, we're sort of up on the hill. And my wife's a schoolteacher, so some of the teachers have been here, she's saying the same thing, they're trying to move classrooms and everything. I'd like to break my comments into two parts, one about the project and then one about what's really going on in this neighborhood. And guys, did anybody catch what the developer said? That this is an extension of the condos coming down? The lady that came up here and said she lived next door, if I was her, I'd be mad as could be. And the day they start digging, I'd come in here and ask you for my zoning change. This is a dam that's going to burst. And what you're going to have is this zoning just spread. And I really want to ask you to think about that. You know, we say when you go to the other side of Vista, you're building high-density housing because there's transit there and it's raw land. And we want to plan that. And downtown, you're doing a beautiful job on downtown. But that doesn't mean every one of these neighborhoods has to be devastated by mixing high-density with low-density. And what you see here are people that are really pushing against this wall of water and they're trying to say, please help us. Avalon was dropped into this neighborhood like a bomb. And I have to tell you, shame on me. The last meeting I was at, Gloria Mc, what was the mayor? Gloria McClellan?
McClellan?
McClellan, yes.
Few years ago.
That was a few years ago. And you know what the Planning Commission was? It was for the office buildings that were supposed to go where Avalon is. And those office buildings never got changed, the zoning got done, apartments went up and everybody was in shock. Now we're fighting the project at the back of CVS. You see what's happening here? It's a wave coming at us and we're asking you guys to support us, please. One other thing I want to mention in the big picture here, folks, is years ago, I worked for a development company. So I sat in on the meetings, preparing for meetings like this. I know how they go. You make a list of all the positives, you say all the things you're going to do for the community. But you notice when they come in and say, we're going to build 40 units instead of four, we're going to help your community. Nobody comes in and says, we're going to go from four down to one because we think that would be for your community. So last thing I just want to mention, the most important spreadsheet we looked at was the one that was about this. That's the most important spreadsheet that a developer looks at. Nothing wrong with it, but please take this into consideration. Our neighborhood's being devastated by the high-density housing.
I actually have one more speaker. Somebody else turned it in. So Dennis, is it Bergren?
Hello, my name's Dennis Bergren. I've lived in Vista for 28 years. My son went through Vista Unified School District. From first grade to fifth grade, he went to three different elementary schools. There was an article in the paper just this Sunday that 52% of Vista Unified are not permanent structures, they're like mobile home kind of things. So our classrooms, and most of those are over 25 years old, the classrooms are really suffering. And I don't understand how you can continue to build without satisfying the infrastructure for the schools, for all these kids that they're proposing to bring in. I just don't think this is an appropriate place or a time to do that until the schools are fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that is the end of our speakers, City Council. So I would entertain Deputy Mayor Rigby, start us off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say thank you to everyone who's here tonight and those of you who had to take time off of work to be here. I appreciate that it does take a lot of time and energy and effort, sometimes with families and work, to make these meetings. And I'm glad that you're all here. Coming before us to ask for a zone change general plan amendment is a big deal. And yes, Mr. Fleming, the bar is set very high. Because for us to have an overriding reason to change our general plan and to give a zoning change for something like this, it would have to be the most magnificent project that would enhance this community beyond all measure. And that is not what I see here. What I've been talking about for years is the vision of Vista and the thoughtful growth of Vista and keeping the charm and the flavor and the character of our individual communities and our neighborhoods. And when you look at this project and, and even the design or the shape of the plot of land, to me, this is reminiscent of the old days when we just did piecemeal things stuck in between other buildings and other projects. And this is not thoughtful and it is not part of the vision of this neighborhood. So I am not in support of this project at all.
Councilmember Franklin.
I have to agree with the Deputy Mayor. When I look at this parcel, I don't think that the high-density fits with the area. I think that this lot, this lot is a flag lot that was built to make access for maybe three additional homes that would fit the character of the neighborhood. And so at this time, I don't see an overriding reason to change the zoning.
I just have a couple of questions I want to add. So if, if they built this project, I'm just looking, would then the road have to be widened and added curbs and sidewalks? Is this, is that a city street or is that?
It's a public street.
Public street?
If they were to develop a project on the site, the requirements would only apply to the property frontage. So they would be required to widen the half-street in front of the project site unless there were any off-site traffic impacts triggered by the project.
So would it trigger a traffic light? Is there a traffic light at that corner?
That would all have to be evaluated as part of an application if this were to move forward.
Okay. What are some of the other things I wrote? Because I wrote notes here, let me look and see what I wrote in my notes. One thing, one thing is, you know, looking at this, at first I thought it would be an okay thing and now I'm kind of looking at it and thinking, no. But where I come from is we need homes in Vista. I mean, we need some starter homes, condos, we don't need apartments, we need some condos and starter homes for people. And so, I mean, for young families, single-family, you know, singles that are needing homes and, you know, our housing, since I've been in the council, and this is my 18th year in the council, and we've built not much housing until the last two years. We built nothing for all those years. All of our housing stock is getting very old. So if we want, you know, young families to come to Vista and people to move here, we have to have some new housing. The older, the older housing gets, the people don't look at it the same. So, so I look at that. So I think we especially need some condos, some newer condos, because our condos in town are not that new. So, and, and we have a housing shortage, you know, people, well, people, please, you guys, this isn't a conversation. This is, it's our turn. You had a turn, now it's our turn to talk. So it's, so, so, anyway, so the, but in the, when I look at the, the area, the price point just to build it, for a developer to build even, you know, two to an acre, they'd be very expensive homes. And I'm not sure that a developer would come in and do that. And I don't know how many, I can't remember how many acres there are, but there would be very many homes. And so I, I don't know. So I'm just kind of, it's a hard decision for me. I'm just kind of up in the air over the whole thing. So I'll go to Councilmember Campbell and see where he's going on this.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually am going to agree with you on most of your comments regarding the housing in Vista. Not only Vista, but San Diego County, California in general, we're not in a minor housing issue of lack of availability. San Diego County especially has a housing crisis. So to say they can move somewhere else is a misnomer. You know, I actually, this is fitting, went and visited two of our newer apartment complexes, Alex and Melrose and Sky Apartments last week, just to see how they were coming along in the finishing, the construction. And the number of people that were in the leasing office stopping by to get on a waiting list for apartments is something that I wish I wouldn't see in Vista. Because it's driving up rents for existing apartments, thousands of families in Vista are being negatively and deleteriously affected because of the lack of housing availability. Not only for sale housing, which is basically nonexistent in Vista for condos. The era of building single-family homes at a large number in Vista or North County, it's, there's quite simply not the land availability to build the housing, to house the number of families that are lacking housing today. That's what's causing three families to move into a rental apartment unit. It's what's causing in some areas, some parking issues with overflow parking from rental units. Now, there were a couple of speakers that commented about apartments. These are not apartments, these are for sale, proposed for sale. But I am going to take a little bit of an issue with one of the speakers that said that apartments bring illicit drug traffic and threaten the stability of families in an area, et cetera. And there's child molesters. I don't appreciate the fear mongering because quite simply, people that are paying $2,500 a month, you're not getting the type of element that we addressed earlier tonight with our crime-free multifamily housing ordinance. So that sort of argument regarding apartments in general in Vista doesn't go very far with me. That sort of fear mongering and throwing the kitchen sink at the issue just doesn't, it's not factual. But talking about the issue we have here, the condos, I'm going to say this is not the best location. It needs further evaluation and examination to even see if it's feasible. I think the mayor, you brought up good points regarding off-site street frontage improvements, the potential for traffic signal. Those are questions that I want answered before I'm going to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down on this. I'm not going- I'm not going tonight. I'm not in a position to support or oppose the potential for a zoning change. I would like more information on those potential opportunities, what the developer may be willing to voluntarily propose versus what we're able to mandate for any potential projects. But in general, it's important for all of us to take note that everywhere we look at these projects throughout the city, there are positive impacts and there is negative impacts. We have to balance those negatives and positives with the fact that we have a fiduciary responsibility as a local government agency to work to address the housing crisis and lack of available housing throughout our region. Building single-family homes on this lot would result, quite frankly, at a price point that's untainable for most all Vista families. There's not going to be a $400,000, $500,000 home built on a half-acre lot. More than likely, those homes are in the $800,000, $850,000 price point, which prices out most hard-working Vista families. You look at the fact that that's a jumbo loan, the percentage that has to be put down, it just prices people out. So those are all things that we have to take into consideration. I think we need more evaluation of this, staff, if we can come back with some information on the potential for off-site improvements and the traffic evaluation on that street.
So typically, when we get into that level of evaluation, it's following a formal application for changing the zoning and developing the site, which requires a fairly significant financial investment on the part of the applicant. So the reason we're here tonight is to try to get a preliminary feel from the council as to the feasibility of the land use changes requested tonight. And if it looks like there would be a majority support, then we would obviously move forward with an application. Absent that, which right now, it doesn't look like we have a majority support, I wouldn't be recommending the applicant submit an application and we go any further.
Unfortunately, we are short one council member tonight to get a fair assessment of the direction of the council.
I see you have more buttons pushed, so. Councilmember Franklin.
Just a couple of quick thoughts that came to me, and I realize I was remiss in not repeating the thank you to everyone who took the time to come tonight and share their thoughts with the council. We do really appreciate that and know it's a commitment of time to be away from your families tonight. And I also wanted to agree with you, Councilman Campbell, about encouraging the growth of, particularly for-sale product. I've been a big advocate of that and have attempted to work with developers to bring, as I think all of us have, to bring for-sale units to Vista in place of rental units. Because I agree with the comments someone made tonight, that owners do have a longer-term investment, not only in their property, but in our community. And that's definitely what we want for Vista. To me, the key about this particular proposal, really, I actually, if you were to take this exact project and propose it in a place that it worked better, I think I would really like it. My specific problem is with the density in this exact location. That's my problem. And I think it doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood. And I think we do have a really unique thing. And I'm not in favor of building every inch of the city to the highest possible density. You know, Vista, and let us never forget, Vista is a very desirable place to live in the county and in the country. We have the great privilege to live in this city, in this just amazingly gorgeous place. I have a good friend who drives an hour to Riverside County. His home is larger and nicer than mine and it costs half what mine costs. You know, there, and I'm not suggesting that people should commute if they don't want to pay, you know, the cost of living in Vista. All I'm saying is, we have to remember that we have something very special. It is something that's very desirable. When I decided to live in Vista, it was one of the things that occurred to me is, geez, this is an expensive place to live. And I think sometimes, because we live here, I think perhaps we lose perspective on the fact that we are in such a desirable community and folks really do want to get into Vista and they want to live here for so many reasons. So I just think it's important for us to keep that in mind. But, and I close my thoughts with, and I've said this before, our highest duty is to the existing residents of Vista, the people who elected us, and not to future residents. Our duty is not to some future resident of Vista. It is to the people who live here now. And I, as my personal compass, try to remember that because, you know, they're the ones who elected us and, you know, our job is to first and foremost preserve what, the quality of life that they have and not to, you know, not to be the champions of solving the, you know, the larger problems of our region. It's a balance. We have to balance. And so that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that you're here not particularly for a motion, but just for direction. And I just wanted to reiterate, I appreciate Councilwoman Campbell's comments, but I disagree completely. I don't, I don't want to see us do a traffic study or a further study on increasing the density in this area. I don't think it's warranted. This is a low-density, two, two units per acre zoning and general plan. And there's nothing magnificent with that, with changing it to high density in this particular neighborhood. So I am not in favor of pursuing this any further on any level. So I just wanted to make sure that I put that out there. Now, yes, I have also been an advocate for getting for-sale units here in Vista and other types of property or homeownership opportunities. And this isn't it and this isn't a place for that.
Councilmember Campbell.
Well, first, I do want to agree with Councilman Franklin's comment. Obviously, I think I actually said it, that this is a balancing act. We do have to serve the community that's here now. That's obviously what we're here for. I think the one comment that I did make was, is that I look at, not for this particular project, because this is a little bit different project in terms of the number of units, but in some of the other high-density projects in North Vista, the proposed for-sale projects, that those do provide homeownership opportunities for current Vista residents. I do think that is an important factor to note. This particular site, like I said, I'm not at all sold on this project. It is a very awkward location next to a very small street. So I think the prudent thing to do would be to have a discussion item on this with Councilman Aguilar, if present, to provide feedback on that at a future date, in a next meeting, perhaps. I don't know, Mayor, what your thoughts are on that.
I would like to have Councilor Aguilar here to hear his thoughts on the subject. So I would feel, I would feel better with not making a decision and having him come and listen to what he had to say, so. So do we need a motion to do that?
I think you've given your recommendation.
Oh, that's the recommendation?
Recommendation is...
Do we need to vote on a recommendation?
Well, there's two councilmembers I think we've heard from that want to have Councilman Aguilar back to hear it. And I think, did you push your button? I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, if you're looking for a motion, my motion would be to deny the application.
This is, this is an item to provide.
This is just a discussion on the item for recommendation to staff, so.
I would like to...
So it's two and two, it looks like. It looks like I would like to bring it back and Councilmember Campbell would, and that those two would like to go the other way. So how do we do that?
I guess there's two ways to look at it. One is if it's a two-two, it doesn't pass or it doesn't go, there's no recommendation going forward. However, a councilmember could make a direction on their own per our policy to bring this issue back if they'd like.
I'll put the item back on the next agenda when Councilman Aguilar is present for discussion.
Yeah, if I might.
So you have a second? Oh, Councilmember Franklin, please.
Yeah, I, I, I think in fairness to all the people who take the time to come and speak, and I agree, I want to know what Councilman Aguilar, what his thoughts are on this also. But I just, do, is, do we want to go through this entire process and ask everyone to go through this process with us twice?
I think that I would.
All right.
Because there's one of us, there's one person, because we have a split council. This isn't, this is not a discussion. Councilwoman Rigby, are you still on the...
I did, because I have to say that as much as we all value our colleagues' comments and opinions and insight, we can't stop, we can't stop city business because one councilperson isn't able to be at a meeting. So to my taste, my, my position is, the four of us who are here tonight, it's a two-to-two, sounds like, which means it does not go forward at this time.
Okay.
That's, that's my position. I mean, if it were going to be that way, any one of us who's not to be here, if we're not going to do any business because one person misses, it sounds like it would be kind of pointless for us to even show up. And it's a lot to ask of our, of our residents to come back and do this again when some of them have even had to take time off of work in order to be here and to be heard. And I don't think it's really very fair to our residents to make them come back a second time.
And just, just to iterate, we do have City Council Policy 200-04 that does state that any member of the City Council can put an agenda item on the agenda to be heard as a discussion item at a future meeting, could be the next meeting, could be the following meeting. So I think that's what Councilmember Campbell was suggesting or recommending, in fact.
And I, if I, may I?
Okay, you may.
I, you know, and I agree with that and obviously supported that policy and still do. The only point I was going to make is, the reason that we started this, and why not for everybody that doesn't know, we begun to invite, what, a year ago, maybe a little bit more?
Yeah.
We've begun to invite those who are proposing development projects to come before the city at the beginning of a project, rather than at the end, after they've spent years and, in some cases, millions of dollars pursuing a development proposal. And we said, you know, why make people go through that whole process? Why not let them come and tell us about it and see where we're at to begin with? And we've received a lot of praise for that. That's what we're doing tonight. So instead of receiving a formal proposal and making a formal decision, this is just, where are we? What do we think? What's the sense of the council? And, you know, I guess for that reason, if there's a member of the council that wants to bring it back, each of the members of the council does have that privilege and totally respect that. But I just, for the sake of discussion, would say that, you know, certainly, the developer and the public has had the opportunity to, to have this forum and the, the opinion of our absent councilmember, I think, might be able to be ascertained. But being that it's the prerogative of every member of the council, I'll just defer to, to whatever the council wants to do. But do we actually, do we actually need to have a formal action in order to close this item and move on?
No.
Is there, is there a motion on the table?
I moved that we deny the application.
Well, there's not, there's not an application that's been made?
Yeah.
And, and is that even legally, is that legally something that would imperil us?
Councilman, the, there is no application. The, the motion that would be in order would be a motion to instruct staff that the council does not support the application.
I'm pretty sure that that's what my motion would have been. I would support, my, I would move.
Mr. Piper, that, that doesn't have any legal consequence force in, in prejudicing a future decision?
I don't believe that it does. The question here tonight was one of instructing staff whether they support it or not. Obviously, if it comes back, the council will be obligated to review it with fresh eyes based on the evidence that comes before the council in any future application. The council cannot pre-commit to vote one way or another. If a formal application is made, they have to wait and hear the evidence.
So might you assist us in the proper language of what we might propose to suit the deputy mayor's intent?
Perhaps a motion indicating that it is the consensus of the council that at the present time, support is lacking for the application.
I'd be willing to second that. Would you amend your motion to meet that?
So the motion is that there is no consensus on the council at this time for this proposal?
I think the way he worded it was that there, the motion was that there is a consensus among the council, that the council is opposed to the presentation it's heard this evening, which I would expect would result in a two-two vote.
I will make the substitute motion...
Councilmember Campbell has an idea.
Yes.
Let's hear it.
I'm going to put in place a substitute motion at the recommendation using language by the city attorney at this time.
I don't know if I do either.
It's on the record.
I beg, I beg your pardon, Cody, but that's what I did a couple of minutes ago, saying that that's the motion that I wanted to have. So I'm going to go ahead and take that.
There was another motion.
There's a what?
I believe you made another motion and then Councilmember Franklin asked for language clarification or recommended language.
I believe, I believe Mr. Piper tried to restate what the deputy mayor was proposing. Did you feel that he accurately restated what you were...
Yes, I felt that the city attorney had adequately stated what my intent was.
Could, could we, could we hear that language again if we happen to have a copy of it?
Kathy, do you have, did you take it?
The motion was to document there is consensus of the council, I'm sorry. Motion was to document that consensus of the council is lacking to support an application. It's a change.
The comment that he had made before that one was the one that I liked, because the verbiage in that doesn't agree with me, that there's a, I moved that there's a consensus to not support this. It sounds very awkward to me. My original motion to, my original motion to not approve any general plan amendment or zoning change to this piece of land, to oppose that, that was, that's my, my motion, to oppose any general plan.
But he put a substitute motion out there.
I, I did, because I know that your motion that you were putting on the floor, I believe, would preclude us from any potential future application zoning changes and prejudice the council. And that's when I believe Councilman Franklin asked the city attorney for recommended language that would allow the council to take any action without preclude, without prejudging us, prejudging us on action in the future. So that's why I initiated a substitute motion.
But we do have the opportunity to bring things back.
We do. And that's why I asked, but I think what Councilman Franklin was referring to was any potential future public hearing on any formal application.
Yeah, and can I just, for the public, there is a legal principle involved. Tonight, we're sitting as your city council and other times, we're sitting in a, in a judicial capacity. And when in a judicial capacity, if we've made certain actions that evidence our frame of mind, we could prejudice ourselves and our decisions can be thrown out by the court. So we have to be careful how we word things so that we make sure that we're... So, we have to be careful how we word things, so that we make sure that we're correct legally.
Or then they couldn't vote in the, or then if you do that, you can't vote in the future.
Yes, somebody got to the point of it. Yes.
So, that's why I put a substitute motion, or I don't know if Councilman Rigby, or Deputy Mayor Rigby would like to adopt in your motion the language set forth by the city attorney, which I believe you just said you were...
But you, you wanted it more in the, more in the negative, so would you accept a motion, or would you make a motion that says that there...
We already have a motion in...
There's not a seconded motion.
I'll second it. The motion that the attorney made, the worded, that...
The recommended language by the city attorney.
Recommended language of the attorney. I'll second it, so we can get this moving forward.
Yeah, I think the reason, at this time, I'll support that motion on the floor that I put forward, is because if Councilman Aguilar wishes to express an opinion in the future, he could pull the item back and have that discussion at that time.
If not?
If not, if not this project at this time, I think that we have a consensus to not support the project in its current form.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, but could I, could I ask for a clear third reading of what we're, because I'm not sure if I vote yes, if that's in favor or no.
I believe the motion is that there is, that the consensus of council is lacking to support an application for a zone change and general plan change at this time.
So, a yes vote would express opposition to the plan we heard tonight, a no vote would express approval, or an undetermined mind or outcome. We all agree to that?
Say that again?
A yes vote would express a disapproval or rejection of the proposal that we've heard this evening from the developer, and a no vote would express not necessarily support, but, but not necessarily opposition. Is that...
See, that's why my language was so much more clear.
I think a yes vote, a yes vote indicates that at present...
Is this, is this, is this vote truly needed? Because it's not going to be a binding...
Do you need a vote? Or can we just...
Let's, all right, let's call the question, then. I think we...
I think, let me, let me interject here.
Okay, interject, please.
What, we obviously have two, two that are against, well, that are not supported so far, and two that have yet to state their opinion one way or the other. What I heard was, how about wait for, if Councilman Aguilar wants to bring this back under Policy 200-04, then he'd have the ability to do that. Lacking him bringing this back under 200-04, it would, it wouldn't go forward.
No, I'm okay calling the question, and just having a vote that says that consensus doesn't agree, or that it doesn't exist at this time.
That is what the motion says.
Actually, we should all be able to agree that there's no consensus.
There's no consensus at this time, right?
Yeah, so a yes vote would agree with the idea that there's no consensus.
At this time.
I don't mean to be tricky, but...
Stop. Don't tell everybody that.
It's not a secret.
Okay, let's, let's vote. Let's call for the vote. Do we all know how we're voting? I hope I'm voting the right way here. Whoa, that vote passes unanimously, with Councilmember Aguilar excused. So, that, that means unless Councilmember Aguilar brings it back, there is no project, correct?
Well, to answer, to answer the question, what does that mean? It means there was a motion to formally state that there was not a consensus among the council to move forward with an application according to this proposal this time.
So, you just don't let Aguilar...
No.
Well, actually, anybody could bring it back.
You mean, we're, any councilmember can bring it back, and there's no other discussion tomorrow, we all want to come back, correct? But you can't hear it.
Okay, this is not a discussion now anymore, so we're moving on.
We're just, we're just saying that, Mayor, to your most...
This was never, this was never a formal decision we made tonight. This was always a sense of council, one way or another. This was not...
Councilman Franklin, let's, let the attorney take it.
Tonight's discussion was merely to discuss the concept of whether or not an application might be considered at a future date. As was explained earlier, this is done now to avoid having an applicant process a project all the way through, and then at the end, everyone says, no, we don't like it. Obviously, most people here do not like it. So, if you look at tonight's agenda, it was to provide direction to staff. The direction to staff is, there is no consensus of support for this project. That is not to say the applicant couldn't turn around and file an application tomorrow, that's his legal right, and then it would go all the way to the Planning Commission and potentially here. But at the moment, there is no support for encouraging the project to go any further.
Thank you for your advice.
Okay, with that, now we're going to move on. So, there were no public hearings scheduled tonight. So, we're going to move to oral communications, and I have, you guys, we still have a meeting going on, so could you kind of go quietly and talk out in the lobby? Hello? People? Could you just be quiet for us so we could continue our meeting? Sir? Forgot his name, what was his name? Okay, okay, so, we have two speakers, oral communications, Rick and Jayden Randall. Are they still here? Where were they? They are still here. Sorry, you guys, had to wait forever, huh?
All I can say is, wow, how are we supposed to follow that?
Listen, whatever you have to say will be wonderful.
I am Jayden Sterling Randall, and this is my husband, Rick Randall, and we are Randall Art Ranch. And we are both on the board of the Alley Art Festival.
Hold on a second. You guys in the back, please, please be quiet back there. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. We are both on the board of the Alley Art Festival, and I am the vice president of the Vista Art Foundation. And, and tonight, we are here to speak on behalf of the Vista Art Foundation. As you know, our president is very ill, and she can't be here to speak tonight. Our president is very ill, and she cannot be here to speak tonight. So, we are representing the Vista Art Foundation. As you know, we'll be putting on the Alley Art Festival on September 3rd in downtown Vista. This will be the festival's third year. This year, we are struggling financially with putting on the festivals, we did not receive the grant that we applied for. The first year of the festival, we had a grant, and last year, we had Labrador Enterprises, which funded much of the festival. This year, we have nothing, we have neither, and we've been doing fundraisers, but we're still struggling. So, this year, we're asking for the city council to help us out. We're asking that the city consider waiving our street closure fees this year. We do understand that other festivals do pay their street closure fees, but when they leave, they don't leave a big impact on the city. We do. In that, I mean that we leave murals behind, we leave sculptures behind. In 2014, we left for the city the Space Coyote mural, which was valued at $8,000, and Alley Art Man valued at $15,000. 2015, we left the Hunting Cat mural, valued at $13,000, and Alley Cat valued at $18,000. That's approximately $54,000 worth of free art that the city received. This year, two new murals will be going up, and we will, we will be installing Alley Art Woman and Love Locks. Unfortunately, at this time, there is no money to pay for these two sculptures, so we will be maintaining ownership of them until funds are received. So, at this time, we are asking for the city council to please consider, just for this one year, to waive our street closure fees. That would help us out tremendously. I have enclosed for you the map of the festival, and where our street closures will be. I've also enclosed a picture of Alley Art Man and the Space Coyote mural, the Hunting Cat mural, and Alley Cat. So, we would just appreciate the city council's consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for staying for that.
Oh, no problem.
Letting know.
Okay, thank you.
J.C. Winn.
I think we need an ordinance where if you speak, you got to stay till the end of the meeting first. Anyway, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, for having this opportunity for the citizens to come address our community. I made a little prepared statement to read from. As a lot of people may not be aware, the high school football season is quickly approaching our fine city of Vista here. It's just around the corner. Rancho Buena Vista Longhorns and the Vista High School Panthers would like to invite the Vista community to come out on Friday nights and support the players, the bands, and the cheerleaders of our community. Both high schools are starting their seasons with new head coaches at both, at both high schools, and along with new programs. There's a new, brand-new stadium remodeled at the Vista High School, which will be rededicated to the legendary head football coach, Dick Haynes, on August the 25th. It's a Thursday night game, and there'll be no other football games in the county of San Diego that night, so hopefully, the grand, the brand-new grandstands can be full for the kids. Thursday night for Vista. Other big dates coming up for the football season is Saturday, August the 13th. Vista High School's having a luau to support the Vista Football Program. For $10 a ticket, you can come have luau food, hula dancers, opportunity drawings, and a very good time for the whole family to come. It'll be at the high school gym at Vista High School, and the whole community is invited. Anyone interested could contact Diana Chancellor at 760-505-7173. Another big date is September the 9th, which is the big Rancho Vista rivalry game, okay, which hopefully, maybe the mayor or city council, deputy mayor could come out and present that big trophy to the winning high school football team. So, basically, what I'm here for is, you know, I've been doing this high school thing, kids thing in the city of Vista, and it just breaks my heart when, like, the stands are barely half-full, you know? I just hope that the public that sees this on TV can come out and buy a $7 ticket and a $2 hot dog and root on the kids, because they really enjoy when the stands are full and the crowd yells when they score a touchdown. It's really quite moving. Kids really appreciate it. And there's no better feeling than having the stands full and cheering at the score of a touchdown. Thank you for this opportunity to address everybody in the city of Vista, and people really appreciate all that you do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, J.C. So, we have, so the next thing is, we have our remarks, and so I will, I'll start with my comments, and then I'll work my way down. So, the final free moving the park for the summer is this Saturday, August 13th, at Bringle Terrace Park, on the softball fields. It's inside-out, and it begins at 8:00 p.m., and the information is available at citia vista dot com. Beginning August 15th, the Wave Water Park will be closed during the week and open weekends through September 25th. That must be right after school starts, if it's, yeah. So, beginning August 15th, then the wave will close during the week and just be open on the weekends through September 25th. Registration for Recreation's Early Childhood Education Programs has begun. The program is available for ages three to five years, and go to thecitia vista dot com for more information. And registration is also open for the Free After-School Junior Deputy Academy at the Linda Rhodes Recreation Center. That begins on September 1st. The Vista Sheriff's Department teaches a program which builds character and good decision-making skills. The academy is free, but you need to register, and information is available, again, at thecitia vista dot com, or by calling 760-643-5255. That's 643-5255. And one other thing that somebody just told me this weekend was that we have Pokemon sites in our parking lot down here, lots of Pokemon sites here and downtown of Vista. So, if you're playing Pokemon, you're going to hang out and do that. So, with that, I will start moving down to Councilmember Campbell.
No comments this evening.
Councilmember Franklin.
I don't have any further comments.
Deputy Mayor, uh, Deputy Mayor Rigby, I'm so used to saying that. Deputy Mayor Rigby.
We have four Pokemon sites right here on campus.
Yeah.
Yeah, between phone calls and meetings, I might be out there catching some Poké Balls. I just wanted to say thank you again to staff for what you do for us, and I was remiss in not saying particularly how much I appreciated you coming back with the recommendations that we had asked for in the policy for the multifamily crime ordinance that we did. That was a long discussion we had previously, and you heard what we were talking about and what our concerns were, and you brought that back, you incorporated it well. So, I thank you for that. And I did want to say that the assistant city manager, Ally Zimmerman, and I attended the League of Cities meeting yesterday, and we had two speakers, one on water and one on fire, kind of going together here this season. The one on water was just basically a history of the drought and regulations that we face here in California, and where we got to where we are today, but there were no particular changes in that. And then fire, the chief of Cal Fire just wanted to reiterate, the fire season is year round, and so asking people to make sure that they keep defensible space around their properties. And other than that, I just want to say thank you, everyone. Welcome back. I hope you all had a great vacation. So, thank you.
City manager?
Thanks, Mayor. There are two items tonight. One is that the city has designated cool zones, which are free air-conditioned zones throughout the city. So, we have the McClellan Adult Activity Center as one, and we have the Vista Library as the other. So, for those on hot days that want to get out of the heat, they can go to the library or the McClellan Center. The library is open seven days a week, and the McClellan Center is open Monday through Friday. Last item is the Fall Vista Leadership Academy begins on September 14th. So, this is a seven-week program that allows residents of the city to interact and learn more about the city. You get to meet with most all the departments within the city. There are tours of the, not only the city, but the jail, as well as demonstrations by Public Works, the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department. And the last night, you have graduation, you get to meet with the city council and ask all of the tough questions. So, I would encourage any resident that is interested in participating in the Leadership Academy to contact the city, and we have information on the website, or you can call the city directly. Thank you.
How about our city attorney?
Nothing further this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
And our city clerk? Nothing tonight? So, with that, I'm going to adjourn our meeting in honor of Jean Cole, who is, actually, worked for Proxion Rec for many years, and we lost her recently, so we're going to adjourn in her honor tonight. So, with that, we are adjourned.